The point is that we've been sending out 10,000 bills.
Mm-hmm.
We've been, well, I guess 20,000 if you count, let's say biennial. The current system, theoretically biennial, even though we waived one. We've been sending out the current bills for a couple of years now without, without the need for that additional staff. The need for this additional staff was calculated, was calculated based on sending out more bills.
Right.
But if we, if we go biennial with paper, we'll actually be sending out even less bills than we do currently. So we'll have even less of a need for that particular.
Unless, unless you're looking at a more aggressive collection.
More aggressive collection.
To pick up past.
Or, or to even get closer to 100% collection.
What they don't want to address is who I need to just, you know, I'm having to put some part-time people on that. And I didn't include, that's not including those numbers right now, but part-time. But there is some, there is some costs. They're not huge costs, but there is, but more costs with part-time folks.
And that's, and those, and those costs are already relevant to business as usual, as in, as in to the current being?
Not necessarily. Because, you know, like, for example, we didn't get a real good feel for it this past time, but like, you know, we would send out the second bill, for example, we'd send it out in July. I didn't, didn't send that bill out, so I didn't get a good feel for it, but I'm sure I would have had to bring in some part-time folks to, to collect those bills, you know, when they started coming in August, September, you know, that I wouldn't typically have.
But, and that, and that was, and that was your experience with the previous service bills we sent out?
Yeah, that was my experience with the previous one, yeah.
So is it safe to assume that if we switch to a paper system, that that cost, which isn't reflected in here, but that that cost would be?
It's definitely, it's gonna be part, yeah. It has a little bit of cost there, but I don't know what that number's gonna be yet, but...
But that, but it would be roughly the same or identical regardless of which type of bill we're sending out?
Oh, yeah, right, exactly.
So...
The only thing we'll have, a little front-end cost, like we're having to get the can sizes, all that into the system, and we'll have to be changing, you know, change that day, and hopefully that'll just aside after we move forward with it. But there'll be some maintenance, there'll be some maintenance costs, some light with maintenance.
And so those, and this is all just for clarification, so we're kind of talking about two separate things a little bit. The, the full-on, extra, full-on employee, 35,000 a year plus benefit, your sense is that that employee would not be necessary if we were only sending out two bills a year?
Yeah, I don't think we'd need that if we sent out.
So that, that very particular line, line 15, just regarding those two employees, if we strike down those employees, that particular line, assuming they, each of these types of employees would be getting paid 35,000 a year plus benefit, we go down to 52,500 or 105. Now, you're describing some other part-time costs associated with sending out a bill. But other than, than some negligible, I'm sorry, so...
Probably need to put some numbers in there for that, yeah.
But to clarify, those, those numbers are not significantly different for paper as opposed to?
No.
The other systems? So as long as we're comparing the systems?
I don't think, I don't think so, yeah.
Okay, great. Another question I have is, if we could just get an unofficial, well, you know, I know estimates are estimates, but if we could get an unofficial estimate on franchise revenue, anticipated franchise revenue?
What?
Anticipated franchise leasing revenue? I'm assuming like low-ball 80?
Probably 100, yeah, maybe 200. If anything, 100, what?
Thousand, 10,000, yeah.
Look at what, what other communities do, and what they say.
And I'm, and I'm...
And that's reflected, not reflected in either of them here?
Okay, great. So, so for what is, and, and are there any other, this, this is a pretty thorough list. We've got, we've got expenses like wages and benefits, and medical and pension, landfill recycling, yard waste, we're going to deal a lot of our supplies, garbage trucks, garbage cans, recycling cans, billing costs, administrative costs, et cetera. So this, this looks thorough to me, but are there any other es- expenses that aren't, that aren't reflected in this?
There are, it's one item, the glass, and when we take the glass collection, right now, we're getting paid for that tonnage.
Sure.
And we don't know when or if, but if we were ever audited again?
Yeah.
And they catch, you know, 20% of that weight is actually glass, then that would already be reflected, you know, our, our new pay stream.
Sure.
As of today, our weights are up, obviously, and we're getting paid for...
Sure.
For that.
Although my, my sense is that that is reflected in these estimates to the extent that, uh, line seven, revenue from recycling, the annual amount is calculated $100,000.
So, that revenue probably was real, really?
Right.
If we were audited, this would be probably representative of that.
Is that, so just to clarify for everybody else's understanding, I think Kevin and I are on the same page, but, but so far this year, we brought in $140,000 in recycling revenue. But we've been sending them a lot more weight because we've been picking up glass. And they don't pay us, the recycling center doesn't, they don't pay us, you know, for this many tons of aluminum, and this many tons of paper, and this many tons of plastic. They pay us a net, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but they...
Well, they, they do pay us based on that, but they pay us based on the sample.
Right, that's, that's the one I'm getting at. So they don't, they don't actually, I mean, whenever we take a load, they don't sort it all out and pay us this much for that, that much for that. They just do like essentially an annual audit of our waste stream and, and then pay us a, and then, and then see like, okay, well, 50% of Frankfort's waste stream is aluminum, I'm making these numbers up, 25% are paper, 30% is plastic, et cetera. And then they calculate the value of those items, and they just pay us one price per ton of mixed recycling, based on those calculations.
And the current market.
And the current, of course, and the current market rates. And so right now, we're pulling in $140,000 in recycling revenue, but it's safe to say...
The 100 came from the previous three or four years of recycling.
It's safe to say that when they factor in, in fact, that we're sending in more glass than we used to, and glass is the lowest value of recycled goods, it's safe to say that $140,000 will, will drop back down. Just, it's, it's artificially inflated right now, because right now, they're paying us top dollar, they're paying us for glass, not for aluminum. I mean, I'm exaggerating, but not, not that way. So it's safe to say that. I get, I get the point, well, that's a long way of saying that that line, number seven, revenue for recycling, $100,000, that does reflect the, the fact that, that our, our glass input is, is not sustainable, as opposed to our, because our current recycling rate's $140,000.
To the base, we can reflect.
Sure, I mean, as everything's an estimate, but, but the point being that, I think, I consider that an expensive hedge in factoring. The increase in glass is reflected in that $100,000 number as opposed to $140,000.
While we're on glass, or on recycling numbers on this list, can I ask a question real quick?
Please, please.
I noticed that in year one, we have the revenue from recycling at roughly $100,000, but if I skip to year five, on the major throw option, that increases 137%. That's in...
137,000.
137,000, well, yeah, okay, 137,000. That over-doubling what we're making in revenue from recycling, is that what you're...
Well, what I did was I went back and revisited that, and we reduced the tonnage by 15%.
The landfill.
The landfill tonnage. And we increased the recycling tonnage by 15%. So the landfill tonnage you reduce by, it's 1,800 times, times $23 a ton, so we took that off. And then we added it into the recycling based roughly on the rate at which they're paying us recycling. But, but right now, we're sending, I think, 1,300 tons to recycling a year, so we, we would, that 15% would be more than we're sending now.
Sure.
And so that's why you see that increase in that number, because we're saving the 23, and then we're also getting whatever they pay us per ton, which roughly $70 a ton or something like that.
I just, I just wanted to point that out, because I think that's an incredible jump in terms of revenue, from what we, where we were and where we could be.
Assuming market prices.
Sure, of course. And it's also, it's also assuming a relatively low increase in our recycling rate.
Assuming 15% is...
Sure. Because the, the $100,000 a year is based on our, the city's actual, this is the, the idea that the, that we have a 6% recycling rate, that was a calculation based on the city and county, based on an analysis of the total city and county weights. When you break it out, the, the city does a better, a better job than county does recycling. So when you break it out, the city's rate's about 12%, yeah?
We might be able to answer that a little bit better, where's the, uh, regardless, earlier, oh, here it is.
If you look at the recycling versus the landfill, you know, with, with the East graph, it's about 12.1%. But if you also throw in the yard waste that we take care of without going to landfill, it takes us up to about 28% diverted from the landfill already.
With recycling and yard waste.
Yeah, and East.
Diverted, and being the industry term, for not sending stuff to the landfill. So, uh, so for what it's worth, if, if we make the, the adjustments we just talked about in terms of line 14, or in terms of bill by, biennially, instead of quarterly or monthly, and I, and I agree, if we're not, if we're not going to charge enough to cover the full cost of collection, if we're only going to be pulling in $300,000 a year in revenue, then it doesn't make sense to send out a monthly bill for that, which is not, the cost benefit analysis doesn't pan out. And I'm glad a number of folks have pointed that out. So if we go to biannual and reduce line 14 to 10,000, reduce line 15 to 52,500, and factor in $80,000 in franchise revenue, then that makes, and I have got a sheet here where I actually already did those calculations in the spreadsheet. But just going to biannual bill and factor in franchise revenue makes our annual cost in year five, $1,539,789, assuming a 15% recycling rate, or increase in recycling rate.
Sure, but...
And that's assuming a 15% increase in recycling rate, Mayor. And our, and our, and current, and everything is an estimate, and these, these prices switch around, but am I, am I correct in their saying that, that, I'd say that a fair current estimate of the current cost of our garbage collection is 1.7 million, exactly that our base?
I think, I think it's pretty close.
1.6. I'm, I'm gonna, I don't know.
I think it's, it's been a little low in the past, Mayor, because we haven't been...
I've got 1.6.
We haven't been purchasing trucks.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, sure, go. I've got a cost of services, 1.450,700, and then, uh, the garbage truck, 150,700. And that comes down to 16, 1.6 million, and then subtracting 550,000, we're getting roughly now, and so the, it's costing right now, that's 49, it's $1,500,000. As compared to, on the sheet, it starts off, I think, 2.1 million, but after five years, it's going to be down to 1.692, uh, nine years. And, uh, the, the projection of, you mean to 300,000, bringing in $300,000 rather than bringing in 550, so if you subtract 1,692,000, and subtract 300,000 from that, then the net cost of five years now would be 1.94,000, say, 1.144 million, as compared to roughly 1 million. So the, uh, the cost will be more, there's a difference there. Almost $40,000 is costing more in five years.
In all fairness, I think that's the revenue being applied differently in those, in those two considerations. I'm, in terms of the 1.7, I'm just trying to, to get a, taking a revenue out of the equation, I'm trying to get a baseline for the, the cost of the program. And 1.7's about, that's what we, that's the estimate we gave the public at the public forums, in terms of the cost of the program.
After five years, though?
No, no, right now.
Oh, right, oh, right now, 1.6, okay, 1.6.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, you're saying 1.6, I have to say 1.7, yeah.
And we made it so important enough that revenue does nothing to control the cost or cut the cost, it just supplements the cost, you know, in terms of payment.
What's that?
Revenue does nothing to cut costs, it just supplements the cost.
Well, sure, but I understand, we're not, just not covering everything either way.
Sure, sure, I understand. And I just want to make that point, that the revenue that we're getting, it doesn't do anything to check long-term costs or, or anything with that.
My, my, I've got a couple of points to make, yeah. But one is that, to clarify, is it, and I'm just, I'm just basing on, on, you know, conversations that we've had in public meetings, and that I've had with staff, and that, well, we've all had with staff, and that we have with the public, et cetera. My understanding is that, is that, considering back to our, we've been skipping some garbage truck purchases over the last few years, haven't we?
We haven't been budgeting garbage truck purchases.
Or a little mind on that garbage truck purchases.
We did purchase for one year, I think we skipped one year, right?
We took it out of transportation improvement.
We took one year in biennial, two years ago in biennial.
And then we've done a five-year lease for that.
Taking that other funds.
But, and the, the, the point of that being that the total cost of the garbage program, when we're not purchasing trucks, looks a little lower than it actually is in, in terms of long-term calculations. We're gonna have to buy these trucks over time, one way or the other, regardless of whether or not we're talking about paper, or the flat fee, or getting rid of the fee, or anything. Is, uh, and the estimate I've, I've heard is that, uh, about $200,000 a year is a fair, is a fair assumption in terms of the, the, you know, in terms of keeping our fleet maintained absent paper.
Kind of your bare bones.
That's the bare bone. So that, because, just to clarify, because we do all need to be talking about the same numbers here, so, so we, the mayor says that's $150,000 a year, that was the truck, the police maintenance that he, that he calculated. But my understanding has been that it's 200. So I'm, I'm hearing staff say that, that it's good to budget $200,000 a year for trucks, even absent paper, and that our, what we've been saying this whole time, that our, our baseline, uh, as part of the program is 1.7 million. So that's on the record. And my, my point there is that, is that, may I, or that's a, two things that ought to be real, but...
Can I, can I ask you just one question?
Sure.
You had, when you applied taking these out on our spreadsheet, you go up to 1.539,789. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's where...
And then, when you applied the revenue stream that we project, what did you come up with, just so I know?
Are you talking about the, that, that, that 1,539,789 does reflect franchise revenue?
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm just talking to these based on the cards you're turning.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't actually go down that road or stuff, I was just, I'm just looking at the, the actual overhead cost of the program. But, but the point, the point being that, the point being that, according to these numbers, the overall cost of the program under paper would go from 1.7 million to essentially 1.5 million over a course of five years, assuming a 15% increase in recycling. But it's also worth, it's also worth noting, I think everybody needs to keep in mind, I mean, these, these estimates are very conservative, and that's good. I mean, that's the way estimates should be made, that's the way budgets should be put together. You know, you estimate revenues low, and you estimate expenditures high. I mean, that's the only, that's the conservative way to do it, it's the only smart way to do it, et cetera. Uh, I'd say that, you know, just based on, and, and I'm gonna ask you all to input on this too. But, you know, based on all the research we've done, a 50% increase in recycling is pretty bare-bones. I mean, that's, uh, that's a pretty safe minimum that, in terms of, in terms of an increase in recycling rates. I mean, a lot of the other communities we've looked at, including, I think that's information from Gainesville, rates of, you know, a 30% increase in recycling rates is much more common for paper communities, and, and that, that's probably the most, you know, median range. 15, a 50% increase is the low-ball base level. I, I actually haven't seen any communities that only got 50%. I'm sure they're out there, but that's a pretty low base, base level 50% increase. A 30% increase in recycling rates is much more common in paper communities, and I've saw communities even hit a 50% recycling, recycling rate. And so, just so that we see the range of numbers, the range of possibility here, those numbers adjusted for a 30% increase in recycling, boil down to a, a final cost after five years of one, and this isn't considering the, the revenue that's gone in. The 30% increase in recycling amounts to $1,361,090.
Cost.
That's the total, right, that 1.7 goes down to 1.3. So we're, we're talking about saving, well, 1.3 and a half, so we're talking about saving $350,000 a year, if we, if we achieve a 30% recycling rate, which is, which is more likely than a 15%. And if we go all the way to a 50% recycling rate, which isn't particularly likely, it's not as likely as a 15, so the 15 and 50 are the outliers. If we can hit a 50% increase in recycling rates, and that breaks that final number down to $1,122,825, so it brings it from, brings it down almost $6 million. I mean, not $6 million, $600,000.
As an engineer, you know, I'm overly cautious.
Sure.
So I, I wonder if we should not take our current 12% into account?
Oh, no, that, that is taken into account. These are...
So if we add another 15 to it, we'd be at 27?
Sure. And if we add another 30, we'll be at...
42.
42, which is...
I don't want to consider it too big of a...
No, I, I agree, but look at the, you know, look at the recycling rates for like, you know, for Gainesville and for other communities we've studied, and, and...
They said 25% increase, increase, but I don't know what they had to start with. That's not 25%.
Sure, sure.
We also need to figure out the cans. If you're having more recycling, there's a possibility that you're gonna have more small, free cans versus medium-sized cans. So if the idea is really to promote recycling, and we're only gonna get $200,000 to be returned, possibly up to $400,000, it almost makes more sense to me just to phase recycling in first, to all the neighborhoods, promote that aspect versus spending $200,000 in five years, so that $100,000 on a can per household, and sticking with the $5 fee. Because at the end of the day, it's about money.
But that's, but that's my point. I mean, if we, if we raise the rate, or keep the rate high for everybody, I mean, yeah, we can, we can, we can bring in more revenue, the higher the fee is, the more revenue we bring in.
Right.
So if we raise the fee from $0 a month, to $4 a month, to $5 a month, then yeah, we'll bring in more revenue. And we can raise the fee a little more a month, we'll bring in even more revenue. But that doesn't do anything to control, to control that, that bottom line down the road, doesn't do anything to control the long-term cost.
Takes away any incentive that you have to recycle.
Absolutely.
Is, is that...
A commissioner may, I think, may see...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. Just want to be sure we're talking, because we're talking about percentages, and I want to be sure I'm following, because I've heard numbers from percentages talked about. At a previous meeting, it said that public works folks said that we had about 30% of households. I won't put words in, I'm just trying, just remembering, it was about 30%, said about 30%.
Yes.
Okay. So that's the number of households. Then it was also said that that accounts, that 30% of the households that recycle, that participate in recycling, that accounted, that amount accounted for about 6% of the total weight that was being sent to the landfill, that was kept in landfill, landfill. Is that, I'm just trying to get this established.
I don't know where that, where the 6% came from.
Well, that's what you all said in your department, you said it was like 6%. We just clarified it as 12%. 6% when you...
I was saying at the last, I was trying to clarify, because at like the last meeting, what was said to us was that it was 30%. I asked them how many households, what's the percentage? Said the number of households was about 30%, and that that accounted for about 6%. But I want to clarify, I just, I want to make sure I'm following, I think it sounds like it's changed, and now you're saying 12% instead of 6%. And I want to make sure I'm following, just kind of connecting the dots, to see, when you say an increase of 15%, are you saying it's a 15% increase in participation in our households? Or 15% of what that's 6%? So if it's 15% of 6%, now you're saying 12% if it's 15% of 12%? Or are you saying it's going from 12% to 15% or 15% plus?
The original spreadsheet I sent out, the recycling went from 100,000, and I put 115,000 as a 15% dollar amount increase. But that really wasn't accurate, in the sense that if the recycling goes down 15% tonnage-wise, then I should have applied that 15% to the dollar amount that we're giving back in revenue. So the 15% that we're talking about is the same 15%. It just, I just took the dollar amount and added 15% to it, and I really should have done it the long way and got the value. The 6%, I don't know.
That's what you all said.
I know, I answered it.
We just answered these questions.
No, I know, I'm, I'm trying to establish, so it's confusing, so we get on the record, so we're all working on the same page. You said, the last one, it said currently about 30% of Frankfort residents recycle, about 6% of the total garbage produced in the city. And so I'm saying, is that number, did you all not need to say that, or were you...
I don't believe we said that 6% number, I don't know where you said that number.
The person who said that number was Squire Robinson, who was reading a letter from Ian Weenbrod, who was quoting a study that had been done in Franklin County about the amount of waste that was produced. But that, those numbers never came from our solid waste department, they came from a citizen group.
Now, they said that, they said about 30%.
A week, yeah, 30, 6% came from...
So I was making sure, I was like, I want to clarify this, because it came out, it got attributed in the newspaper article to you guys, and I wanted to say, is that, because what you all said was 30% of the households, approximately.
Right.
Right? Because I won't put words in, approximately 30%. So my question is, you're saying the 15% increase, are we talking 15% of what?
Tonnage.
Tonnage.
Okay, and you're saying tonight that the tonnage is 12%?
Yes.
So 15% increase of 12% or 15% of what? Because that's confusing, because if you say it's 15%, a 15% increase...
I'm saying, to get this estimate, I said a 15% decrease in landfill trash.
And so I was using the term 15% increase in recycling. So that's why I tried to get...
Well, it's diverted, what, 15%? That tonnage, it doesn't go to landfill, it goes to recycling.
I'm just trying to get...
And so then we take it back in.
I want everybody to be on the same page, you know, and I'm not sure that, so my question, like, is the methodology that you're using, 15% decrease of the garbage that would go into the landfill is now gonna go to recycling?
Yes.
So, that's 15% on top of the 12%?
Yes, that's going.
So that would be, it would go, it would increase to, your estimate is about 27%. I don't want to put words in there. So you're saying 20% of all the waste that would be produced?
Right.
By the community, and this new, we're providing these bigger containers and all aspects of this, you're estimating that now it'd be 20, 27% will not go to landfill?
That's what I, that's what my estimate.
Right. And so we're saying, right now, we've got about 30% of the households that participate. So just, what I'm trying to figure out in my head, that's a big jump mathematically, but that's what I'm trying to figure out, how you came up with that, how many, what's that percentage?
Maybe this will help. We do about, um...
Maybe this will help, we do about, um, in, according to our record, we do about, uh, ten thousand, ten thousand tons of solid waste to the landfill annually. So if you do fifteen percent increase in recycling, or reduction in waste to the landfill, that's about fifteen hundred tons that's diverted, and where does that go, we're assuming that it's going into the recycling stream. So, like in two thousand and ten, we collected about thirteen hundred tons of recycling on our curbside program. But if you add fifteen hundred tons that's diverted from the landfill to that thirteen hundred amount, then you're losing twenty-eight hundred tons of recycling materials sold that will get a revenue stream.
I think I can bear up some of this confusion.
I'm gonna ask a question, are you asking where the fifteen came from?
Right.
How, why did we assume fifteen percent?
And you're saying, yes, and I was...
Just simply from other communities that have enacted similar, have seen an increase.
Okay, so how much, so that would have, is that of new households that are not being recycled, that will start to recycle? Or are you saying that people that are recycling, I won't put words in, I'll just ask you, how do you, because if we got thirty percent of the house, approximately, based on your numbers, approximately thirty, thirty percent of the households, out of the ten thousand plus households, that's three thousand, some change households, right? So are you saying that you are going to see more people, you're anticipating that more people will recycle in addition to that thirty percent of the households?